Good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the Cedar Woolley Council meeting. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, council knows the draw on the consent calendar. If there's something you'd like to speak moron, call it out. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve A through E. Did you call a moron?
Mr. Mayor?
Thanks.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar from A through E.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by council member Galbraith and a second by council member Limley to approve the consent calendar A through E. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yents? Passed unanimously. Okay, we got item four, Skagit Council of Governments' update presentation, Kevin Murphy.
Yes, thank you. So my name is Kevin Murphy. I'm the executive director for the Skagit Council of Governments, which you are one of many jurisdictions that are a member. So I'd like to come out once a year or so to give you an update on what the Council of Governments have been up to. As a member, you're one of the governing bodies that's a member of our organization. So I'd like to just kind of walk through a little bit of what we're up to. If you want to move the slides ahead, please. So what I want to do tonight is give you a little bit of background of what the Council of Governments is, which most of you know, so I'll go through that pretty quickly. What are we currently doing, what our work programs are, and how we're currently structured and funded. So a reminder, the Skagit Council of Governments is a voluntary association of local governments. We were originally established in 1967, so we're almost up to 50 years old as a planning organization. And we're established under the state law governing councils of governments. And if you remember last year, we updated our governance agreement that came to your body for approval, and that rekind of updated all of our, how the boards are structured and things like that as well. This is just, this is the enabling legislation. Really, I just showed this to say, the councils of governments can do whatever the board and the members desire they want to do under a regional cooperative agreement. So what our current agreement does is, next slide, please. Forward. So we pretty much focus on two major areas, which are regional transportation planning and economic development. Transportation planning is the vast majority of what we do. We also administer and provide staff support for the Growth Management Act Steering Committee, which Cedar Woolley is a signator of that agreement as well. They don't have staff. That's just a cooperative agreement to do Growth Management Act planning in the county. And then we also do what we call the North Sound Connecting Communities Project, which is referred to historically as the Farmhouse Gang. It's the five northwestern counties in Washington, and we deal with cooperating on large regional transportation planning that goes between Snohomish, Skagit, Island, Lockum, and San Juan Counties. So moving on, here's a list of our members. Keep going. Our current structure, this was what was approved last year in the agreement, we have a SCOG Board of Directors, which does all the non-transportation planning decision-making, so budgets, economic development, revolving loan fund, those sorts of things. Then we have a Transportation Policy Board that makes all the transportation planning decisions that deals with the federal and state regulations related to those, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Staff structure is, I report to the board. We have three other staff, two planners, and a financial manager, so it's a staff of four. Next. Talking about what we're doing on the transportation side, what, we're through these metropolitan planning organizations, which is an NPO, and a regional transportation planning organization, which is an RTPO. The NPO is based on federal legislation. It's Cedar Woolley, Mount Vernon, and Burlington became large enough to require a metropolitan planning organization in the 2000 census, so we provide that function as well, and then the RTPO is counting. They both, both geographies match, so. Next. So in general, what we do on the regional transportation planning side is provide a consortium for all the jurisdictions to get together with the state and the feds and WashDOT, and ensure that the regional transportation plans are consistent with all of your local comprehensive growth management plans. So really, a lot of this is dealing with transportation because it crosses jurisdictional boundaries. Next. So major emphasis areas, we have, we do a regional transportation plan, and we're currently in the process of updating that. We do a transportation improvement program for the regionally significant projects and anything that's federally funded in the county. So the SCOG Transportation Policy Board makes that decision. We maintain a regional travel demand model. We provide that information for the locals to use in your comprehensive planning updates. It's used by the members for transportation planning purposes along with us. Also, we're required by state law to certify your transportation element of your local comprehensive plan, and to ensure that that is consistent with the regional transportation plan. So that's one of our functions under RTPO. Also, we do a lot of, you know, looking out in the future, so we take the forecasts that we develop that are used, the same forecasts that you are using for your comprehensive plan, and we use that across the county to kind of look at where future travel issues may be and what future needs may be. So that feeds into the regional transportation plan. But a lot of the reason we do the long-range planning is to provide context to the decisions that we make now. So we're making investment decisions from now till our plan horizon in 2040, but that context is really to help us make better financial decisions today because the finances are fairly tight. And then we facilitate collaboration among government agencies on other issues that the boards may deem necessary. A lot of what you hear about is our project selection process, so we do have regionally managed funds that the SCOG Transportation Board decides who gets that money. And that comes from us, to us from the Federal Highway Administration. We get about $1.5 million per year in what we call surface transportation project money that helped fund projects in Cedar Woolley. And we also get about $140,000 a year in transportation alternatives project funding, which is for non-motorized projects. STP funds can be used for most any regional transportation issue. So this is from, this is what I call the modern era. So when we became a metropolitan planning organization till now, these are, we have awarded $31.6 million across the county, and here's a listing of how much money each jurisdiction has received. So Cedar Woolley has received about $3.2 million in regionally managed funds for projects since 2004. Mount Vernon at $9 million, the county at almost 12. So that gives you a sense of the magnitude of the federal funds that we manage. Next slide. Here's recently completed projects, so not recently awarded projects, but finished on the ground. So your Cook Road realignment extension was a project that we put money into, the region put money into, along with many other sources of funding. In addition, one of the other major projects that was completed was the roundabout in Anacortes. And a couple of years before that, the Anderson La Venture project was the largest project that we funded. Next slide. So on the economic development side, we do a couple of things. One is, next slide, please. We are responsible for doing a comprehensive economic development strategy. It was last updated or completely done in 2003. We refreshed it in 2013. This is the long-range economic development strategy for the county. It has been mentioned at the board to be a priority. Now that there's a new director at the Economic Development Association, we'll probably relook at how we want to move forward with developing that jointly with EDAS. Also, we do, next slide, we do a revolving loan fund program. So since its inception in the mid-'80s, so we first got this funding in 1985, and it's been turned over. We got an initial grant of about $1.5 total million. We've loaned 6.4 over the course of the, you know, 30 years. So that, we turn it over, so, you know, people pay it back, we reloan it out. And then it's primarily for, you know, increasing jobs in Skagit County. So, I mean, the metric that we have to have is it retains or creates jobs primarily. So next slide. So the work program that we're currently doing, just keep moving. So here's the major work program efforts. Some of these are completed, so I won't talk about those too much. The big transportation ones are the update to the regional transportation plan, which is due in 2016 in April. This is a refresh of the current plan. We'll have to do a complete rewrite of the plan based on federal regulations in about 2018, so we're going to update this and then go into a much bigger update once the regulations get finished. We're also doing a rail crossing study. This is currently ongoing. We've hired the consultant. This is looking at future rail traffic throughout the county and its conflict with vehicle traffic. So we're forecasting future rail volumes and future vehicle volumes and looking at the crossings that have the highest issues. So we're looking at about, I have a slide in a second to go into that a little bit more detail. The board has decided that we want to continue the revolving loan fund program. We are trying to market that much more readily to folks. We've been talking to all the chambers and a number of folks. Again, the economic development strategy, probably 2015, 2016. Growth management, we've finished the population employment work initially, and now we will go into land capacity analysis currently, which we've been talking to Cedar Woolley about and others. The rail crossing study, so broadly, we look at about 60 of them. We're going to go into more detail analysis between about 10 and 15. That's still, we're right in the middle of the methodology process. So the next slide. So we're in the methodology and data assumptions part. We'll do, we started some impact analysis, expect to have that done at the end of the month. We'll do an initial set of findings and report to the board in October with a draft, and then final report recommendations in December. We're hoping that this will identify a few crossings that should be included in the regional transportation plan. There's also been move on the federal side to create a rail crossing program federally, and there's also a move on the state side to do the same. So how we're funded?
Is it just to improve the intersections themselves, or to create like underpasses and things like that?
It's to look at what, which are the, which ones are our most important crossings in terms of they need solutions, and it could get to the point of doing great separations.
But I mean, is it just looking at, is it basing the certain amount of crossings in creating projects based off that?
It's looking at, are there problems at those crossings, and will they get worse with future forecasted rail traffic, and looking at the traffic, the vehicle traffic operations. And in some cases, especially in Cedar Woolley, there's a number of crossings that are very close together, so we're looking at them as a set to see, and then the consultants will help us, and we'll be working with your staff as well, about what are the most efficient solutions to the problems that we may identify. Expensive solutions such as great separations are tough to do unless you have a specific grant program, because there's just so little money available. I mean, we do $1.5 million in STP a year. If it's a $35 million crossing, we can help you get the design money. But, so, you know, there just aren't grant programs in the state right now that can fund that level of project readily. But like I said, Representative Larson has put in a rail crossing bill in Congress to have about $450 million per year available nationwide. So these types of solutions would fit very well in his concept. But we currently lack information in the regional transportation plan on what are the most critical crossings that should be solved first. So that's hopefully where we'll get to is, and some of these may be what they call intelligent transportation solutions instead of, you know, great separating. How can you sign and change your signals and things like that to be more efficient? But in some cases, like the Kincaid Crossing in Mount Vernon, it's like, I mean, now it would be interesting how you can actually make that a significant improvement, given the rail station, the transit station, the close to I-5 ramps, et cetera. The geographies, or geometry is really tough. So how we're funding, primarily, we're funded through federal grants for transportation planning, so that's about $380,000. State planning grant is about $70,000 a year. We still have a little bit of money left in the farmhouse. RLF interest and fees brings in a certain amount. And the next slide, which is Pathy's favorite, is the dues about, so this is the dues that the board adopted, initial dues assessment for 2015. They're the same total amount as 2014. The distribution is a little bit different because population is a driver. And that is it. Happy to answer. Any other questions? You may have.
And we appreciate the new method of determining the dues, because we don't have a lot of money, so. Who makes all the decisions? Is it the board, or is there committees, or what's the?
The boards make the decisions. So the two boards, the SCOG Board of Directors and the Transportation Policy Board are the governing bodies. They make the decisions. We do have two other committees. There's a revolving loan fund committee that makes recommendations on just the RLF program, and then there is a technical advisory committee for the Transportation Policy Board that makes technical recommendations on items the policy board wants their input. So project scoring processes, which projects in the regional competition should be considered for funding are recommended by the technical advisory committee.
You know, one of the concerns I've heard is that there's a bunch of people concerned that there's no citizen input. So what are you doing about that?
So we've done, it depends on the project. So we have a current public participation plan that lays out a multitude of strategies. Currently, for the regional transportation plan update, we are attending community events. So we've gone to three or four the last two weeks on what the regional transportation plan update should emphasize. We've heard from over 100 citizens at those meetings so far. We've got another half dozen to a dozen scheduled in the next month and a half on the regional transportation plan itself. On the, like, the project selection process, there's, the board, on every major item, they have a discussion meeting and then an action meeting the next, so there's over a month period of time. And before that, the technical advisory committee will make a recommendation that, as soon as that recommendation is made, it's made available to the public for comment, and if they provide comments on the technical advisory committee's recommendation, we make sure the board gets it as part of their packet. The board meetings themselves all have public comment periods available to them. So on major items, there's, you know, four, often four points in the process, like on the project selection process, there's at least four points in the process where the public can engage the board itself. When they set the criteria in the process, there's two meetings, and then when they make, when the technical advisory committee makes the project recommendations, there's two meetings to discuss and make that decision. And then, like on the Human Services Transportation Plan process, we had an ad hoc committee made up of interest groups and stakeholders that have citizens on it, that they went through the project ranking process and made a recommendation to the board. Those were for transit access projects. So it kind of depends on what the project is. So the way, you know, we have normal public participation opportunities at the board meetings every month, but each major project then comes to the board with a, here's our engagement process for that project. So next year, if we do a regional project selection process, the board last week, or last week, said they may have an ad hoc committee that has citizens on it to help do that process. We'll make that decision once we decide that we actually have that process going on next year.
What's the health of that revolving loan program? It looked like, so you started with one and a half million, you've loaned six, so does that mean four times at least it's been paid out and paid back and reloaned?
Overall, yeah. We have a, overall, our default rate's about 20, 22% on the loans, so that has been, some partially recovered, some not recovered at all, so they've been written off over the 30 years. We currently, I don't remember the exact numbers, how much we have available, but we, you know, our largest loan fund program, I think we have like 500,000 currently available to loan. Our maximum loan amount is at $80,000 right now, based on the plan. And right now, we have, we have less than five, I think, active loans left that, and we've had a number of inquiries this year, but no loan applications this year. So we have money available. The loan environment does not seem to be conducive for people to actually look for these types of loans, but we have been talking a lot to commercial bankers and others about getting the word out that these monies are available.
I was always having the impression, oh, it was, if you got turned down at a bank, then you could come.
Right, so the largest loan program, which is through the EDA, Economic Development Administration, the business lending one is, that's correct. If you're going after a business lending loan, we can give you up to $80,000. The board could go higher, but the board's plan says $80,000.
At one time, 150.
Yeah, there was, at one point in time, it was 150 or higher. That loan program, you do have to be turned down by a commercial bank. So, you know, these are by their nature, if they qualify for that, they are by their nature a higher risk loan, which is what this program was for. It was set up in the '80s because of the large losses of manufacturing or resource jobs in Skagit County. So, thanks. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we will go to public comment. Jeff Stein, you can speak about something. Say your name and address for the record. No? Okay, we will close that. We'll go to parking ordinance, the second reading. We had the first one last council meeting, now we're at the second. And this is action requested, and I would assume this would be John, or Aaron, Aaron Parking.
Yeah, so there's no changes from the last version until tonight. I didn't receive any comments or modification requests from council members. What this ordinance would do is prohibit parking vehicles on city rights of way for periods of time in excess of 10 days, and it also includes a more comprehensive enforcement process.
I did have one call, BJ Kennedy.
Oh, yeah, I received that call, too.
And she, she wanted to make it only three hours. Not 10 days.
And I think she was from the Brickyard Creek neighborhood as well, right?
She said, I'm like a three hour. So this constitutes, if I move my car from there to there, it starts over?
Yeah, if you moved your car to a different parking space, you would no longer be in the same place for 10 days. Yeah. I mean, if you end up with a cat and mouse scenario like that, then obviously, we can come back to the city council and say, well, we'd like to define now what that means. You need to move it to a different block or whatever. You know, most people are honest, though, and if the issue is that you're sitting your rig in front of somebody else's house and never moving it, you know, and for some reason the neighbors can't just work that out and say, hey, you know, could you not leave your car in front of my house for months at a time, then this gives the code enforcement, the police department, the tool to go in and say, you know, you have to move it. It's now against the code in Cedar Woolley to leave it here for more than 10 days, whereas today, all they can do is go in and say, you know, you're kind of not being a very good neighbor. Could you move your car? And when the guy says, screw you, the officer says, well, have a good day, you know.
He doesn't say mate, does he?
Have a good day, mate. I don't know. No mate.
Maybe we should add that to the ordinance.
You could say sir.
Sir, good day, sir. That's just another tool in the toolbox for dealing with problems on a complaint-driven basis. I would expect it would also get used by our street sweeping operation. So as the sweeper runs into vehicles that never move, now they can make note of them, let law enforcement know, law enforcement can deal with that, and, you know, they can sweep up the plants that are growing into the asphalt in those areas.
Trees.
Small trees. Send out the stump grinder first and then bring the sweeper back.
There's some that have been there years.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1821-TAC-15, adding new section to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code 10.44 regarding time limits for parking on city rights of way.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by council member Waggoner and a second by council member Corningay to approve ordinance number 1821-TAC-15, an ordinance adding new section to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code 10 dot 44 regarding time limits for parking on city right-of-ways and updating the enforcement process. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yents? Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Next meeting will be a very busy meeting, so you can rest assured we'll make up for a short meeting tonight if that's in fact what we have.
Well, we'll have that next week, a good one. Workshop. But you want to talk about this picture now, or?
Sure we can, if you'd like. I put on the council page a photo, actually, a little montage. What we've got is a situation where the picture on the first page is a brand-new fence, so built last week or whatever. It's on the front of a house, faces the street. This fence is not allowed under the fence code, which is what you see on the top of that page. And really, since about 1985, the city hasn't allowed six-foot fences in the front yard unless they're chain-link fences. So we're cool with chain-link fences, six-foot chain-link fences or other fences that you can see through, but not wooden fences. And if you flip through, I just grabbed a couple of kind of random pictures really from the neighborhood. Now, the second one is just a fence on Township in the same vicinity, same with the third one, the metal fence, and then the fourth one is a fence actually on Talcott Street down in, oh, I guess my neighborhood. The question that's presented is, and the reason I'm bringing this up tonight is, this brand-new fence, they're looking for their occupancy permit and getting signed off to move in, and John's in a position where he reads the code and it says you can't have that fence. So he's saying, you can't have that fence that you just built.
Paul is the fence.
It's about six feet, about six-foot fence.
It looks like it runs along the side of the fence, not across the front.
It's the front of the house. Yeah, it's the front. It faces the street. But the problem that I see is that there are literally hundreds of fences in Cedar Woolley that fit this bill, and it seems to me that if we say, you can't do this now, then we must, we must go and say the same thing to those fences that were built after 1985 that are similarly situated.
This is the side, this is the side of the.
Does it, does it run along the property?
Not in front of the property.
In front of the property.
Also.
So is it like from the backyard to the front yard?
It's only in the front of the property. It's not on the side of the.
You're saying this is the front that we're looking at?
That is the front, yeah.
The garage, well, there's a house on the side.
Correct. Yeah, so you enter, from the street, if you want to go to the garage, you drive into the property and hang a left. So the garage does not face the street. The garage faces the side. It's a large property.
Why is the residence address on the side?
Well, I don't know. It should actually be on the front, so a fire could see it better, but that is, that is not, you know, the front face of the house, the street side of the house is where the fence is. So the question, though, for you is, really, is do we want to begin a full-scale enforcement effort? I'm a little reluctant to be excited about that. On the other hand, you know, there's a challenge in that the code is, very clearly doesn't allow for this. And I guess what I like to suggest to you.
I want to see this. What address is it?
It's 815 Warner Street. It seems to me that it may be prudent for the city council to, you know, ask the planning commission to take a look at the fence situation and not do enforcement at this time, but do a little bit of review on this thing. It seems odd to me that you allow six-foot chain-link fences, which in my view are very ugly, but you would not allow a cedar fence such as this, or that we would not allow the fence on page one, but not enforce. the fence on page one, but not enforce the fences on page two, three, four, and that was just like a two-minute tour of the city. With an hour, I could probably have 100 pages worth. So, you know, I'm, I'm just struggling with, with how to proceed, because neither of those scenarios are very appealing to, to me, and John's just kind of stuck, because the code says what the code says. So, he does not have the flexibility to go in and say, yeah, it's six-foot and side-obscuring, yes, the code says you can't have that.
Well, you have to treat everybody equal.
Well, and that, that's exactly right. I mean, that's the hallmark of what local government does.
Yeah, you can't go, this one passes, and the next guy doesn't. And I, I've always been an advocate that you should help put tall fences in the front of your house. You know, what's the difference between a giant hedge in front of your house and a fence? I never could understand that, but I know, you're not allowed to do that in, like where you guys live, Cheryl, unless it's a side. Now, they can put them down the side, but not the front. I don't understand that.
Right, right, you know, if you look at my house, for example, you'll see a tall fence in the front, and then as it transitions to the side, it jumps up to a six-foot side-obscuring good neighbor fence.
But you can have a hedge that's taller than your house in the front, that's okay.
Yeah, I didn't grab any pictures. There are lots of examples of those where people use the arbor vitae or other landscaping, and, and they get, you know, 10, 20 feet tall.
And they go out, and you can't walk on the sidewalk here. Fences don't do that.
Aaron, I have a question about this house.
Yeah.
This sprouts from the middle of the side of the house and go, and is, is not in the front at all.
Well, it faces the street, though.
Yeah, but it's the side of their house.
Well, when you are on the corner, you have two fronts.
What's that?
When you live on the corner, you have two fronts.
Oh.
Right, you know, so, when you look at that, it's, it's.
And it's an open-type fence, right? Wouldn't you consider that open, because you could see through it?
Well, the language is it can't block vision by more than 25%. So, no, I would not say that fence blocks vision by less than 25%.
What about the chain-link when you guys built on State Street?
Chain-link, it has slats.
Over by?
Well, that's not in the residential zone, I'm only talking about the residential scenario here.
Okay.
But, yeah, I don't know, there's.
But I mean, that fence has slats through it, so you can't see in.
Can't have slats in the residential on the six-foot. You could have slats with a three-foot fence.
So he can remove every fourth board and be good.
But it has to be no more than 25% side of the street, so it has to remove three out of four boards.
Oh, three out of four. Kind of a little tree, or the slat was.
Commonly, you'll see, the bottom part solid, up to three or four feet, and then the top part with like the hog wire or some sort of thin lattice that is not fully side-obscuring, but is still a six-foot fence, but is at least 25%. There's only 25% blocking in the top part, and so we, we work with people to do that a lot.
So, I'm just confused about the, I mean, it doesn't say anything in here about road frontage, does it? Am I missing, I mean, what am I, what?
It says front setback area.
Front setback areas, but what does that mean? Front of the house, or?
Replicate the whole code, I just, section in there, and.
They can have two fronts.
But.
Front setbacks are anything along a public right-of-way, which includes roads. Alleys are treated differently, although, yeah, so alleys are treated differently, they're, they're rears. If you have a front, if you have a corner property, you have two fronts and two rears, you have no sides, which is better for the, better for the resident, because sides sometimes will have bigger setbacks than, than rear. Rears typically five or 10 feet, depending on the zone, and fronts are pretty much 20 feet setbacks.
Setback means from the, from the property line, it has to be 20 feet away to have a fence?
For building construction.
A six-foot fence.
Oh.
You can't have, you can't have a six-foot fence for the first 20 foot of that.
So if you have two fronts, you get rid of your rear?
No, you're, you're side. Your rear is to match your two fronts.
I'm not going there.
So you're looking for what? A suggestion that the planning commission?
It seems to me that rather than.
Look at this.
Engaging on enforcement effort around up of fences, I think we want to take our time and be a little bit deliberate about it, and it seems to me the planning commission ought to look around the city, and this is, this is kind of that scenario that, that we learned from our engineer friends, when everyone's going 35, maybe we shouldn't have a 25 mile an hour speed limit, because they all want to go 35. And if everybody in town wants to have taller fences than our code allows, then maybe we should sit down and figure out what the correct height to the fence law should be to fit the community.
Works for me.
Makes sense.
Yeah, I have no problem with that fence being that, that height on a side-street like that.
Well, it's Warner, I mean, it's not really a side-street, but it's, I mean, compared to a, I mean, I, I don't know, in my mind.
Well, what makes this different than, compared to that house on Sterling with those, with the 8,000 cars in it, right? I mean, it's the same thing, you have a fence in the front, what makes that fence better than the next fence?
That, that fence would also not be allowed at, you're talking six.
Well, I know, I, I guess I'm arguing counter to, to Rick.
I don't have a problem with this.
Oh yeah, I think, I think there's a difference between having a side fence on the side of your house than actually being in the front of your house.
These are all fronts.
They only gave you front.
Well, this is a side. The one on Talcott, that's a side.
Well, except it faces all front-street. I mean, that's.
But do we need to start defining what the front is?
No, the code defines.
That's defined.
The code defines front, and really, the question's just, you know, and, and you, you know, maybe the thing to do, if you'd like, is to, you know, take a meeting and cruise around and just look at, look at fences. I mean, I think, I drive by them all day long, don't notice them, it's not until the owner of this fence came in and said, you know, gee, my wife wanted me to build a six-foot chain-link fence, oh no, excuse me, I wanted to build a six-foot chain-link fence, my wife thought that would be ugly, so she, she said, do a nice wood fence, I built it, now I got to tear it out, which if I have to, I guess I have to, but then how can everybody around me gets to have six-foot wood fences and I can't? Which I think is a totally legitimate question. I would feel exactly the same way.
Well, he can tell his wife he was right.
Right?
Sure, that'll go good.
Yeah, he'll smack him.
Are you comfortable, then, asking the planning commission to take a look at this? They're pretty jammed up, so it'll be a little while before they get around to it. I don't see that there's a huge time element, but.
Well, there is, if we're not letting this guy move in.
They can not come, delay occupation.
That would not be a condition of him not being able to move in.
Oh, okay, okay. That's, there's nothing to do with it.
Very good.
But he's aware that it's violation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's where I found out about it.
Office today, saw it.
Well, maybe just to bring it to a, a point, it seems to me it might be appropriate if we had, I don't know, a motion to suspend enforcement of 1744 on the height issue, pending review and recommendation from the planning commission.
So moved.
Check in.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember Waggoner, and a second by Councilmember Kenzer to.
Suspend enforcement.
Suspend enforcement of 1744.010 until the planning commission can review it.
Right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Some discussion.
I was wondering, we have a work session next week?
Yeah.
Is that what I heard? Can we put this on there?
So, so the work session, we've got two items that'll be fairly consuming. One will be the UGA amendment, GMA process, and that's a joint meeting with the planning commission.
They told that big house down.
And then the second piece would be for the city council, not your 2016 goals and objectives in advance of our budget process. So certainly, if you'd like to have it on there for a conversation, it would be, you know, kind of a fresh issue for everyone.
Post these three panels.
So it's up to you, you know, just let me know if you want it on there.
I don't know what everyone else thinks, I just thought, you know.
We want to let the planning commission review it and then bring it back to us.
That's where we just noted on.
Yeah. But I'm thinking in the meantime, we, while we have a chance to look, might as well talk while it's fresh.
Yeah, I think, if you, if you all have time, I mean, when you're driving around, just kind of look for fences, and you might be surprised at what, what's out there.
Okay.
Chain-link, barbed wire, wood, metal, minutes.
Okay. All of them, go ahead.
Barbed wire fences into the city limits where there's animals.
Well, we actually do have, we have barbed wire in the city, and, but I don't think it's allowed in the residential zone. I don't, I'm not sure, I don't, I can't say there's none in the residential zone, I'm, I have not gone out looking for that. There's no question we have barbed wire in some of the commercial industrial areas.
I was just questioning. Barbed wire, LA 20.
Okay, so, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Yance, pass is great. We'll go to, anything else, Aaron? I'll go with Chief Tucker.
Okay, just a couple things here. We've got Jed and Brian, the two laterals we got from Burlington, they're out on their own, they're doing really well, out there, integrated well with the group. We just took delivery of our newest patrol vehicle, it's being outfitted right now, I think it got wrapped, or that it's wrapped today at the sign shop, and it's going to go to Glenn Gardner for all the outfitting and all that, and we'll get that rotated in the fleet as soon as we can. It's really needed, because we ran out of cars, we got more bodies than we had cars. Some of you may have seen, we've opened up a Facebook page for the police department, Detective Paul Eaton is managing that, and we're hoping to get some really good responses from that. We're kind of modeling our management of that after a lot of what Mountain Vernon does with their Facebook page, and we kind of got their policy and procedure, we're going to look through that and make sure it fits what we want for, for us. And you may have seen in the paper, they got the bids on the new jail, which is desperately needed, just to let you know, today, we've got somebody screaming in a cell right now, had her in there for probably two hours now. The jail's been closed since 1:30 because it's full, and they're booked up, so we're kind of running into a wall there, but that's not completely uncommon, but it doesn't happen a lot. But we've had, we've got to keep a prisoner, we can only keep somebody here for six hours, so they're going to have to determine, my guys are determining when they brought her in, and we're going to have to get her out of here and get her somewhere here in the next couple hours if they don't open back up. So it's getting a little bit desperate on the jail.
In the past, have you taken them to Coopville and?
If we've got, if we've got room, usually, the jail doesn't stay closed this long. This person's a burglary suspect, and she didn't get brought in until, oh, I know they hooked her up earlier, but she's probably only been in there about four hours now, three hours. So we got a little bit of time, but we're hoping we get, get her in our jail, we, we can go to Oak Harbor or something like that if we got, they've got the space and all that, but we're hoping to get right into our jail. That's all I have.
Can you post them?
Yeah, we have a fire academy that just started on Saturday, 15 cadets in that, we have just one, but the other 14 are throughout the county. The Seadruly Firefighters Association's kind of heading that up and running that. We, of course, had crews up at the New Hanlon Fires, and they're all back, and vehicles back in service. The burn ban is still in effect, with, even with half the state on fire, we're still going out on illegal burns and chasing the smoke. We've had a couple complaints about the smoke that's coming over the pass, they think there's a illegal burn in the neighborhood, but really, it's just, you can wash the whole stuff.
Big neighborhood.
We have still spots available for the public CPR class, it's going to be held on September 17th, the public one, so, that's it.
John?
I'd like to thank the council again for approving the hire of Building Inspector, Plans Examiner. That job has been posted, I think it's on the AWC already. It's posted out on our website and been posted in the paper so far, and that closing date for that is September 10th, hopefully we'll have some qualified applicants before that Just incidentally, since the last council meeting on August 12th, we've had two new duplex applications come in, commercial expansion, a mobile home, and a single-family residential application. So, things really are picking up, and we're hoping that this is continued, but in the meantime, we'll definitely need some help, so I appreciate council approving help for that. The planning ends September 2nd, as Aaron mentioned earlier, we're going to be having a, a work session, just to kind of update the council about what's going on with our application to the county for our urban growth area expansion and modification request. I think I filled the council in a little bit on that last time, so I'll spare you the details today, but we'll be going over that in more detail on September 2nd with the planning commission in the room as well.
Hey, Mark?
Just a few things, we did get all the TIB applications submitted last Friday, the four of them, and the ball field, they're going to be seeding that next week, they're going to start watering it on Monday, and we're going to put the seed down on Wednesday is the plan. Green Street's getting, getting graded for paving, their completion date is actually September 4th, they may be a few days beyond that, but that's moving ahead okay. We're cleaning storm drains out on F and S Grade Road, and we, just to give you an update, we had Mrs. Tomacino from over on Brickyard Creek come in last week, asking about bank repairs, and we did get those made this last week, and in fact, we've been doing Brickyard Creek maintenance the last two weeks, so that, that's done. And Aaron will probably tell you about solid waste, but they did the last, I think, of the container swap-out today, although I think there's probably quite a bit of missed ones and new requests and things like that that'll be going on for some time, so anyway, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Okay. Aaron?
No, he got dinners cooking down the street.
Not yet.
Passy?
Last week and this week, the finance department has been the call center for the solid waste recycling and yard waste delivery, and so we've all learned a lot about where different streets are in town, that maybe we, you know, half a block log with three houses on end, and anyway, things for the most part are going fairly well, but it's a, it's a big task.
Yeah. Okay, Kevin?
We're two and a half weeks away from our skateboard challenge out here at the skateboard park, so if you happen to think of it, pass the word along to everybody to come and watch, some of those kids are really amazing.
What's the details on that? Oops, sorry.
Take something to the chamber about it, so they can get it on the reader board.
Okay, I'll, I'll do that tomorrow.
You know the guy.
So, what's the date and time?
Date's September 12th, the time's probably 11 o'clock.
So I was just, I really miss the concerts already in the park, and I just wanted to thank the Rotary and all the sponsors for those, those are really nice. But we have a sign that's left up, like one of the banners is left up around, roundabout, that's the only one I've been seeing, so that probably should come down. It's given me, I wish I could do that again. And I was wondering if anything ever happened with the other two people that stood up for a public comment, other than Ms. Tomacino. Elizabeth said something about the ATM, and then Dennis O'Neil complained about the tree that was blocking traffic.
I can tell you about the tree, we have that on the list of things to do, we had it on the list before we came in, and I called him up to let him know that we'd do it when we could. Our crew has been extremely busy, we've had most of our, well, all of our parks crew and most of our seasonals have been assisting with the container delivery for the last two weeks, and we've been really scrambling to get everything we can get done before the rains start on striping and these ditch operations we talked about, so, but we do have it on the list, and he does know that. But we do have it on the list, and he does know that.
Cool. Thank you.
And it's pretty challenging to regulate that free speech just because it's an ATM.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I haven't really figured out what the mechanism would be. You know, we've got the pedestrian interference ordinance, so you can't cross the plane between pedestrians and vehicles, which is based upon a safety concern. You know, what was articulated was really a lack of comfort because you're at the bank, and, you know, the same would apply to going to the bank or any of the other ATMs. It just so happens this one's kind of right there. So, I don't know. I can take a look and see if there's any guidance, but the direction sure is not moving in favor of more enforcement against that type of behavior. It seems to be moving the other way on a... Through the court system.
Yeah. Thank you. That's it.
Brenda?
I think there is still a fireworks sign down on Highway 20 headed west. Is that something on the list?
Nathan knows about that.
Okay.
It's also on the list.
Okay.
I have to say, too. And the burn ban sign that's in front of the North Cascade, that clinic has been down for a while. I'm not sure if it's, you know, it's fallen down maybe at least a couple weeks ago. Is that supposed to be? I mean, I don't know if they've...
I'll go check and put it back up. It's just a sandwich board, but yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's going to probably fall down periodically, but yeah, we'll check on that.
Mine is right there, too, and it falls down all the time, too. I think when they mow, when they mow there from the clinic, they just don't ever put it back up.
I see. We'll keep an eye on it. Thanks.
Hugh?
Nothing.
Hugh?
Today, I saw two delivery trucks that I didn't recognize. They were rental trucks delivering totes. Is that all part of the deal?
Yeah, they were probably the Penske trucks.
Yeah, they were on Reed Street.
They were the picking... They were picking up trucks, totes.
The old ones up.
Yeah, so that's a subcontractor working for Waste Management, getting all their totes out of the city.
I see.
Okay. Can you mention those, Jared? How do they smell?
Because I didn't recognize any of them. Thank you.
What is happening to address the residents on Green Street about the trees? Are they going to be replaced or...
We received a petition from most of the residents. David and I had already agreed if they all asked, if they agreed to do it, then we would go ahead and do it. We had some budget for force account, so we'll start removing them tomorrow. They'll all be out, and then we'll grade the interior, and they've agreed to replant appropriate street trees the neighborhood has. So, anyway, I don't know how we can hold their feet to the fire, but that's the agreement there.
Good.
I had one more thing, too. On Highway 9 on the sidewalk going up, they have blackberry lines growing over the sidewalk. Those people aren't... They need to cut it back or...
Yeah, we've got that on our list of things to do.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. We had a Parks Board meeting the other day, and the main topic was to convert the Lions Shelter at Memorial Park, kind of the second-largest rental shelter there, into a caretaker home to better keep an eye on the park because the park's kind of deteriorating, and so we figured if we can revitalize the park, maybe eyes there would help that. I think also to possibly talk with a neighbor house as it may be an alternative to converting that shelter as it may be an option, but I think the total bill that was under 40. I can't remember what the dollar was.
Yeah, the estimate was around $30,000 to convert the shelter, and that would become a fall project, so it's something that, you know, we're interested in pursuing as part of the 2015 budget rather than the 2016 budget, using funds that were originally budgeted to do the riverfront caretaker residence, moving that money over to Memorial Park to get that job done, and then working forward on Memorial Park improvements. I think part of what's happening is we're looking over at Bingham Park, and instead of being the park it was a few years ago, it's a really nice park. I mean, it's beautiful. It's cared for. It's tended. It looks good. People are spending the night there in RVs. You know, we're probably hoping to maybe get some, you know, picnic shelters and maybe some better bathroom facilities someday out there, but it's really transformed, and a lot of the credit, of course, goes to the redesign of the park, the fencing, but a lot of it goes to having a full-time resident caretaker there who opens and closes the facilities, keeps an eye on it, chases people out who are not acting, you know, correctly. So, the thinking is maybe Memorial Park could have a similar Renaissance with somebody there who cares about it, so...
Other topics were to add... Possibly add slides to the slope at Riverfront Park. Wanted to... A lot of towns will do them where you have a slide that runs the length of a hill. You know, a kid can't fall off and break his neck on a slide that's a foot off the ground, so it seemed like a kind of a neat idea. Another topic was a partner with the school district to close Talcon Street, one for student safety there, and also to possibly create a regional park that could be accessed by the neighborhood when school is not in session. And then last, there was a need for more... More, I guess, the short-staffed in the Parks Department, I think there's one halftime and one seasonal working, I think currently, and there's... They're definitely overworked. Well, I mean, there's more work for them than they could possibly do.
And we'll bring to you as part of the budget conversation for 2016 some decisions for you to make. You know, we have prioritized our street and storm functions clearly over our park functions, and you can see we're making progress on that front, but I think we need to be deliberate about what we're doing as we kind of continue to move forward and, you know, let you make the call about where you want to put the limited resources we have available. One thing I can assure you is that we will not have enough resources in the 2016 budget to do everything on the list, but this year, there are basically two lists down in the Public Works Ops. There's the street and storm and the parks lists, and, you know, we're making good project progress on one, and we're not really making much progress on the other, and that's okay. I mean, it's kind of... You take turns. You know, Bingham Park was a huge push last year. Getting the new playground at Riverfront was a big push last winter. This summer, it's catching up with streets and storm. We just don't have enough people to get the job done, and you can see that in some of the parks.
Someone talk about your time. Prioritizing.
Yeah, just from my perspective, too, we have very active and very interested folks in Seagull Woolley that are building new parks and are rebuilding them. You know, the new Tesseract Field's going to be a beautiful facility, and it's going to take more maintenance than when we've had to spend out there in the past. And, you know, and those folks are putting a lot of time and effort and money into that. They're going to want to see that thing kept in prime shape rather than the way you see it most of the time after the ball season's over with. You know, we just don't have the people to do that. It's just frankly true. I, you know, I know Nathan is just embarrassed at the condition of like Memorial Park, and, you know, I feel for that, but, you know, we've had other priorities, and that's just the way it is. But we split the time for what we call Parks Department also with facilities, and that